Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Condon, we know he's here. Crowe.
Here.
Linehan. Man's here, too, right. McDonald.
Counselor McDonald's here, too.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Here.
Seika.
Yes.
Siminelli.
Yep.
Winslow.
First order of business.
Would be the four sets of minutes?
Do we have any?
No.
Double comments?
Nope.
No public comment? Okay, so.
Four sets of minutes. Paper 432-22, the minutes from the meeting of October 5th, 2022. Paper 433-22, minutes for the meeting of October 11th, 2022. Paper 427-22, minutes of the meeting of October 18th, 2022. And paper 428-22, minutes of the meeting of October 25th, 2022.
Or Winslow.
I just have a question on the minutes of October 11th. We didn't have a quorum. Do we have minutes when we don't have a quorum? There was no meeting that night, so we ended up having to... We didn't have a quorum. Is that practice? I just was curious.
And the minutes reflect that. But again, all these items are in grandicus, so just to keep a record of it. You know, there was the events, although there wasn't much events that night, but five did show up, and we just... The meeting was canceled because it's not a quorum.
Okay. All right. Well, I make a motion to approve the minutes then.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to approve the minutes, all in... Oh, seconded by Counselor Siminelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Those minutes are approved. Next order of business, please.
Paper 439-22, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of City of Malden, MCC 2.12.170 Recreation Program and Recreation Coordinator be amended. Counsel Winslow.
Counsel Winslow for that.
429.20-22.
Yeah. So this is a paper I've been talking with Recreation Director Joe Levine and Laura in the Recreation Department about how we do permitting for facilities. And, I mean, under our ordinances, the Recreation Coordinator is responsible for issuing the permits. And so they... Right now, they have some guidelines that they have under their... They're allowed to adopt rules and regulations. So I sat down with them, and we reviewed the rules and regulations, and they're actually planning to update those. But, you know, one of the things that they can't really update is, right now, there's no specific thing. If people don't follow the permit rules, there's really no penalty for that. And so this does a couple things. There's two key parts of what's being proposed is... One part is to actually allow, if people aren't following the permit rules, then we could impose a $300 a day fine. So that would give the Recreation Coordinator the ability to do that, because right now it's not clear who enforces these things. The other aspect is to, you know, and this comes up in various contexts, about in issuing permits, how long those permits can be. I mean, the practice has been those permits are seasonal. But one other addition of this ordinance would be to make clear that the Recreation Coordinator's authority to issue permits would not be more than a year. So I think it just clarifies... I mean, we had some controversy this past week about people saying that, you know, there was a discussion about a 20-year lease or whatever, and this proposed ordinance would make it clear that any permit over a year would have to be approved by the City Council. So that's something that... Just to be clear, that any long-term agreement related to our recreation of facilities would have to be approved by this body. So those are the two key parts that we, you know, were working on. I mean, the other thing that, you know, they'll be working on with... At the Stadium and Facilities Commission that sets the rules is that we were looking at their rules, and while there's rules that relate... You can apply for a permit. There's no requirement that people use a permit. And, you know, we do have at least one major user that has not applied for a permit since 2017. I've asked if they filed for a permit. They haven't done that. So it's not clear, you know, if someone is using something without a permit, whether we have any authority right now. So that's another aspect. But the Stadium and Facilities Commission is going to, you know, update their rules to make it clear that groups over a certain size have to apply for permits. And then this will just help reinforce that. So that's the basic of it. It's just to really... Those rules have been in place for about five years now, so this is updating that. And, you know, so there's a... They'll be updating some rules, but this will just help make sure those are more enforceable. So.
So... I know, Counsel Siminelli, you have your light on, but this...
Yeah.
Basically, we're going to make a motion to move this to rules and ordinance for further discussion.
Yeah, this would go to rules and ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. And we could have, you know, the rec coordinator come in and talk about what they're working on, too, so... But, yeah, we just want to try to get this in place by the end of the year so that next year, as requests for seasonal permits come in for the spring, that we have new rules in place. That's what we're working towards.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Siminelli? Let me get you on.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I support this proposal that Counsel Winslow is producing tonight. This is something that we talked about in the subcommittee that we have for parks maintenance and restoration. This has been an ongoing issue with the permit processing. We've, you know, even though I know he's alluding to like the bigger proponents of using the parks, like that use the parks all the time, but there's also people that are coming on the parks that are organizing activities, and, you know, we're going to have more discussion on that, of how, you know, is it 10 or more that they need a permit? You know, because I... For instance, Lincoln Commons is one of the parks. And all of a sudden, you know, and it's after 5:00, so there's nobody to enforce the rule, even to imply a $300 a day fine, which it should be that, because what's happened is our parks are getting destroyed from people coming over from other communities, setting up like... In Lincoln Commons, I had people setting up like soccer instructional courses. And these people are getting paid, and they're using our parks, and, you know, there's like 100, 150 people in cleats running up and down, you know, Lincoln Commons. And if that kind of use keeps going on like that, you're going to have a dust bowl or a mud bowl in the middle of Lincoln Commons. So, you know, this is, again, this is part of what we've talked about in the Parks Restoration and Maintenance Committee, that, you know, that's one of the pieces, is the permit processing piece. You know, who enforces it? How long is the permit good for? Who needs a permit? You know, so, you know, I support this paper wholeheartedly, and I think it's a step in the right direction to start to look at our parks and be able to have a proactive maintenance plan and a reactive maintenance plan. So it's a good paper.
Thank you, Counsel Siminelli. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I also thank you for bringing this forward. We probably all have similar thoughts about how our parks are used and maintained, and the Parks and Rec Committee, actually, we're going to be setting up another meeting and looking at open space plan, working alongside of Counselor Siminelli's committee as well. But just to make sure that we're allowing people to use the parks, we want that for free space, but they should be able to set up and play. That's what they're there for. But if there's somebody using it, getting paid and, you know, and using it more than once or twice, like it looks like something regular that should be charged, I'm for that, too. So thank you for bringing that forward, and hopefully we'll have some good discussion on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Just before we make the motion to move it to rules and ordinance, I just want to say this. Counselor Crowe, when you take this into committee, this is something I didn't realize until about a month ago, when we had the RAP team meeting, that there are only certain agents of the city that can actually issue a fine. So someone like Joe Levine would not be able to issue a fine. It's, you know, the Police Department, the Board of Health, but they have to actually be associated with a particular agent group of the city to issue a fine. So just make a note of that. It took me by surprise, so.
Yeah, that's why we need that. Right now, we don't really have that meeting.
Yeah, so, anyway. Okay, on Counsel Winslow's motion...
Counsel O'Malley.
Oh, Counsel O'Malley, I'm terribly sorry. Hold on one second. Yep, wait a minute. There you are. Okay.
Thank you. The only question I had was whether or not there should be like parallel language in section 1.08.010, which is Procedures, Procedure for Enforcement of Ordinances, and it kind of goes into like fines and enforcement authority. So is it referred to... Oh, is it specifically referred to? All right.
Yeah, we're going to... Yeah, I know the language that's here is the language we put in when we were doing the latest, I think we were doing... We were doing some other update. So I use exact language. I don't know if those were the zoning bylaws, or it's the exact language that... But we can certainly... We'll have legal review before it comes back to the council, and we make sure that everything's included, you know, as we look at rules and ordinance. So we'll... But this... The language that's in there related to enforcement is the same language I think I'd spoken in another context, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm mentioning it is because, like, if it's discussed in ordinance, and they need... And we need to amend this other section, I want to make sure it's posted so that you can properly make modifications to it. So as long as it's clear to us and the public that what we will also potentially be discussing is 1.08.010, then I'm in support. Thank you.
So on Counsel Winslow's motion to move to rules and ordinances, seconded by Counselor Siminelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That will be moved to rules and ordinance for discussion. Next order of business, please.
Paper 317-22, order that MCC 12.12.190.8.2 be amended.
Okay, so these are papers that Counselor Crowe... These are papers that were enrolled last week. Yeah, enrolled last week in September. Okay. You're going to ordain them tonight?
Yes.
That's the goal. Okay, let me get you... Let me get you on here. There you go. Counselor Crowe for the papers.
So these three enrolled ordinances actually do have like a sunset of November 14th. So we thought we had a little more time, and it was the feeling of the council to sort of try to take some of these... They're all related to cannabis as a package deal. Unfortunately, because of circumstances, we still have a couple of papers that are being heard in planning, and if we don't take action this evening, all of these will die as well, and we'll have to start the process all over again. And all three of these are really more administrative in nature, and it does not really talk about or even... We haven't discussed yet because we haven't had the public hearing around the Special Permit Granting Authority or any of those changes. So it would be my motion, I can go through each one of them, and just sort of a quick reminder of what each one of them say, but to ordain.
I think for the general public, just for transparency, if you could just give us a quick update.
Yep.
I did read them all today, so I know what they are, but...
So do you want me to just read the papers?
Yes, just, yes, one by one, just say what they are.
So 317 of 22, which is that MCC 12.12.190H2 be amended, and that really has to do with the security plans of marijuana establishments as they're going through the process. And we changed some of the language just to sort of simplify, instead of having redundancy, that the design and implementation of the security plan is approved by the police chief and the Malden Cannabis Licensing and Enforcement Commission. That's... I don't know if we're going to take these up separately.
Why don't we just...
Okay.
Let's do one at a time.
Yep.
So, yes, Counsel O'Malley. Let me get your light on.
It is a little confusing to know what they all are, and reception in here is a little spotty. So this first one here, which is 317-22, is about the security plan?
Security plans.
Okay. And then what's 318-22?
Well, when we get to that one, we'll let you know.
No, because it's super... Because they all kind of are packaged, so it's important for me to know.
The... Well, I can go through them all, and people have questions separately.
Go through them all, Counsel Crowe.
318 of 22 is actually prior to issuance of any final occupancy permit. Prior, we had building permit, and the... It's kind of one of those catch-22s that we, the Building Commission, could not... Needed to issue a building permit for people to actually do the build-out. And so they were asked, the Cannabis Commission, the state Cannabis, was calling Mr. Miller, and sort of, do they have a building permit? Do they have... So it's really changing it to the final occupancy permit, because they need the building permit to actually do the building. And then 319 of 22 is actually... It says amended to the purpose of existing special permit use regulations to reflect current protocols and administration of zoning ordinance to render the language in the ordinance is consistent with the current interpretation and application. So this is just bringing that same language that... And again, well, not again, but Michelle Romero, our city planners here for any questions, is bringing some sort of the same language into the residential use, the institutional business, industrial uses, properties preferably preserved. There is a whole list of them. Fast food restaurants, regulations for restaurants, drive-throughs, gasoline filling stations, and that's it. So it's bringing the language through all the other areas as well.
Thank you for clarifying. And then which ones were negatively acted upon by the planning board, and which ones were favorably acted upon?
These are all enrolled ordinances, so we've already enrolled them, and they were all favorably acted upon in the planning board.
So even the security plan one?
Yes.
So the planning board recommended these be approved?
Yes, and we enrolled them, so now we'll just ordain them. We enrolled them in September.
Yeah, that's all. They're vanilla. They're very... Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think the only thing is, again, the entire agreement was that we take these up as a package, and now we're kind of reneging on that by doing it tonight.
Well, the... To answer that question, we would not, unfortunately, due to circumstances. So if we don't take action, these fail, then when we have our planning board meeting next week, and we have to kind of redo those, we have the option of those other ones sunsetting as well.
Yeah, I think that gets to the challenge of the planning board not having the hearing when it was originally scheduled.
Well, I think what we need to do tonight, though, is, I mean, it's up to a vote of the council as to whether we want to, you know, ordain these. You know, from the chair, I would say, it's been a lot of work put into these. They are more technical in nature. I think that probably going to get a good amount of support from the city council, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward with these and just call the vote to see how this plays out.
I agree, and I make a motion to ordain. We could take them separately if people would like to.
Let's do them separately.
Yeah, please do them separately. I mean, I think before we rush into this, I think that 319-22, I would be opposed to moving forward with that one at this... Actually, all three of these, you know, the three of these were favorably acted upon, so they can just go back out for a hearing, and we would be able to act upon them altogether. The only one that really is time-sensitive is the one that we're not talking about now, which is 430-22, which was the principal use regulation, which is, I think, the one... That is the one that is time-sensitive, because it was negatively acted upon by the planning board. And if my understanding is correct, and if the city planner could please correct me if I'm wrong, if that's not favorably acted upon, or is negatively acted upon by the city council, that can't be brought back for a certain amount of time.
Correct.
Exactly, so like six months or more.
That's only if it's voted down. That is not if it expires, Counsel O'Malley.
Could we get clarification on that? I think it's kind of important for us all to be prepared and understand what the rules are.
Can we have our city planner? We have this just...
I know, and we have... We also have, as City Clerk was saying, you know, we do have the committee report that's coming out of ordinance, tonight's ordinance meeting, that actually addresses that, so...
I think, you know, the question was really... I think we've already taken the first action on these first three. They're already in rules, so now we're dating. I think what Counsel O'Malley is talking about is sort of the committee report that... And when I get to the committee report, we can, in our meeting just prior to here, there was some discussion around some of the... The planning board did vote to want to deny that or move unfavorable, to be the only principal use. And if we took action to make an amendment, there was a list of places we should still have the restriction. So there was some debate and some conversation in the ordinance committee, and we sort of, as the ordinance committee, decided we're going to let that expire to rework, instead of sending the same exact paper back to the planning board, sort of rework some of those that we still wanted the restrictions, in some way we can let the restrictions go. So it would be a different paper going to the planning board.
That's what we're trying to do, is take them one at a time.
Because my proposal would be that we table these three papers, take up this principal use one first, and then depending on how that vote goes, I think would influence how some of us up here would vote for some of these other papers, particularly because we agreed from the beginning that we would take this up as a slate. But now what's being presented is only the ones that some of the council wants, but not the other ones. The whole point was for there to be a slate of changes. So again, the three... The top three can get referred back to a hearing. It seems to not be a problem to reschedule hearings with the planning board.
It's wasting their time.
Counsel... I have a motion on the floor to...
Yes, and I have a second.
So I'd motion to table these three papers. I move to table.
No, there's no second part. Fields for a second. So we have a motion on the floor to ordain...
Order 317 of 22.
317 of 22, seconded by Counsel Seika. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
President.
Seika.
Yes.
Siminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Yes.
Gary's 10 to 0. Hood 9 is at 10 to 0.
Do you have a motion for 318-22?
Second.
No, I can't... I'm just...
Make motion to ordain 318 of 22.
Seconded by Counsel Seika. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
President.
Seika.
Yes.
Siminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Gary's 10 to 0.
10 to 0, okay. Counsel Crowe, do you have another motion on 319-22?
Motion to ordain 319 of 22.
Seconded by Counsel Seika. Once again, if you call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
O'Malley.
President.
Seika.
Yes.
Siminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Gary's 10 to 0.
Okay. Okay, next order of business, please.
Committee reports for 430-22, Standing Committee on Enrollment Ordinance, doing the referred paper number 316-22, have considered the same, make the following report.
Motion received, the committee report.
Sure. Motion received, the committee report. It's going to be very short. As we said just prior to this...
Counsel Crowe for the committee.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Sorry.
Counsel Crowe for the committee.
Sorry about that. As I just... As I just mentioned, the committee met prior to this because of the sunsetting, and this is about the primary use. And so as a committee, we decided that we were going to refile something that we can sort of... We had Counsel McDonald make some... A motion to keep some of the restrictions in, and then there was some discussion about what some of the other restrictions should be. And so as a committee, instead of trying to rush this through, take it back so that we can refile with the planning board as soon as possible to have this hit. So we don't have a committee report, we're just going to refile. There's no action to be taken.
No action to be taken. Yes, Counsel O'Malley, one moment, please. Let me put your light...
Motion to enroll. The ordinance as amended.
Fields for a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Counsel McDonald. There you go. You're good?
Not good.
There you go. Now you're good.
Okay, thank you. Are we allowed to do that? Or is there a council rule that prohibits us from taking action on an item when it hasn't been referred out of a committee?
Has this happened before?
You just... Well, the committee... We didn't refer anything. We tabled it, recognizing we're going to have to go back and do more things anyways, so we're going to have to go back and do another planning board hearing anyways on this. So we did... We were going to do that. And so in the absence of any committee report, can we even consider the item that wasn't reported out of committee?
Are you talking about his enrolling motion?
Yeah.
Or...
Yeah. Yes, I'm referring... Yes, I'm referring in... Counsel O'Malley made a motion to enroll item 430-22, and there... Or I'm sorry, it's not 430. It would be 316-22, which there is not on the floor here, because the committee didn't recommend it out. So how would... Can we enroll it if we're...
Discharge it out of committee.
Take it out of committee. It's on the docket.
Yeah, discharge it out of committee.
This is my question.
Okay, okay, let's kind of... One at a time, okay? So I believe that we have our city solicitor here, and I believe Counsel Siminelli is right, you can discharge it from committee, but let us get a ruling on that. Mr. McNott? Mr. McNott. Well, it is on the docket.
It's, it's, it was, it was, could I, could I just wave?
Yes, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, folks. Our parliamentarian, I will get to you, Counsel O'Malley, our parliamentarian clerk wants to speak first, and then Mr. McNott, would you stay in the wings for a second, please?
So, so a, as we learned about a year ago, when an item was not on the docket that we thought may come out of committee, we, you know, since that time, and we've done it several times since then, it put items on the docket thinking there's a possibility a committee report couldn't come to the full council, so you could take it up. So that's the reason why this appeared on the docket. It, it could get discharged from the committee if, if enough votes were there to discharge it from the committee, because the committee basically is not making any recommendation on the paper.
Yes, Counsel O'Malley, let me.
I, I understand what you're saying. We just received a committee report. We took a vote to receive a committee report. The committee, the committee report provided no recommendation. That can happen. It is properly before us. We just received a committee report with no recommendation. They did not refer it favorably, they did not report it disfavorably, they reported it with no recommendation, meaning it's before us, it does not need to be discharged. It's here.
They tabled it in committee, though.
So then there was no committee report. We didn't.
No committee report.
But we voted to take up our committee. So that, so then that, that might have been where my confusion was coming from. We received a committee report on this paper, which usually means it's now before the committee. I thought that that committee report was coming out with no recommendation. That, that's how I understood it. If that's not the case, then it's not before us, and it could be discharged. Thank you for clarifying.
Counselor Cologne Hayes, do you have your light on?
But I think, was that just taken off? So I, I had some clarifying questions also, so it sounds like it was just discussed, and you're withdrawing? No, okay. So I just, I sat in the committee, and I had some questions too. I, I would personally vote on this, but it sounded like they didn't think there was a chance that we would have to wait like another six months if this didn't pass on the floor, and that's the reason why it wasn't moving forward. Because I feel the same way. I, I would hope it would get passed like this, but without taking the chance that this would be delayed even further, I'd like to just move it along, yeah.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in, as a, as a point of clarification, just in response to what Counseler Cologne Hayes was saying, so when we, if we were to take up what was discussed in committee, we'd actually be taking up the planning board's recommended language, is that correct? Not what we originally filed? Because we didn't vote on the, we, we couldn't come to agreement on what the, the planning board recommended back to us. You had made an amendment, but we chose not to take that up. Therefore, what we'd be voting on would actually not be what? Yeah.
You could take up the amendment that was voted on.
You could take up the amendment. Okay, that's my, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, so. Yeah, letting it die. Okay, next order of business. I believe we're done. Next. Okay, so next order of business.
No, okay.
Let's see, where are we at? We're at paper 431-22, Standing Committee on Rules and Ordinance to whom was referred paper number 367-22, having considered the same, and given that this paper was reviewed and approved by the building inspector as requested by the committee, make the following report that the committee recommends this paper reported out favorably to the full city council as amended by taking out the word, words stored and replacing it with placed.
On Counsel Crowe's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Committee report is received. Counsel Crowe for the committee.
Thank you. So this ordinance is about putting placing dumpsters. No dumpsters shall be placed on the public way, including purposes for pickup by the service provider. So we had, in the original paper, stored on the, on the public way, and again, we're changing that, so it's amended to be placed on the public way. So it came out unanimously at a committee, voted on and everything, so make a motion to enroll.
Do I have a second? Second by Counsel Condon. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seaca.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Carries 10 to 0. Docket's clear.
The docket is clear. I do want to say one thing that I actually meant to say at the beginning. But we were running a little bit, we were running a little bit late. And that is just for, just for the edification of everyone in the audience and folks here on the dais. The Urban Media Arts, their link is down, so we were not broadcasting live tonight. It is being recorded, and it will be uploaded to YouTube tomorrow. So sorry, I meant to say that in the beginning of the meeting, but, um, yeah, so, anyway. With that said, I have some lights for personal privilege, and we will start with Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. So I, I misunderstood paper, the, the paper 316-22, the one that was, I thought, referred out but wasn't. And the, not taking that up was the reason why I voted against the other three. And if possible, I'd like to change my vote to, to yes. I voted present, I'm with the majority, but their, their common sense won, so I'd like to move to, to change my vote from present to yes on 317, 318, and 319.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
It's already a yes. I mean, it's already a yes.
It's a yes.
So I voted with, okay.
Present is yes, but, I mean, technically, it will say present.
When it goes into the system, like, present isn't a thing.
Okay.
It will be in, just as the majority vote, so it's gonna be a yes.
So I voted with the majority, yes, thank you. Thanks for clarifying, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Linehan.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to quickly let folks know, I guess who are gonna watch the recording. We had a great second community meeting on the Malden Hospital redevelopment last Thursday, and we are posting the slides and the video from that for anybody who couldn't be there, and that's at cityofmalden.org/maldenhospitalproject. That just went live yesterday, so starting to get a few emails from folks who couldn't make it, you can see that. And then I did just want to give a quick plug. It feels like, you know, maybe a little early for the holiday season, but I know Counselor Cologne Hayes and I are both already getting emails from constituents looking for maybe help with clothing and toy donations this year. I know with inflation up, it's a tough economy out there. So I'm pleased to announce that the Mary Malden Drive is gonna be back this year. We have an email address, it's marymalden2022@gmail. So if anybody's interested in donating or is in need of some help, that is wide open, and I would welcome anybody who's listening, both up here or in the community who wants to get involved, please reach out. You can contact me, or you can use that email address. So stay tuned for more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleague, Counsel Seaca, for helping me and joining arms in the Halloween Safety Day event that we had down at Lincoln Commons. I really appreciate it. It came in at a good time because we had the Jaden, Jaden Day the week before, and the week before that, my mother passed away. So it, it was a, it was a nice phone call to get, to have her call me and, and ask if I needed any help and if she could be of assistance, and she did, and we had a good time, and I want to thank you for that, I appreciate it. And I want to thank all the volunteers that helped make it possible, and all the people that came out. It was a beautiful day, sun was shining, everybody seemed happy, and I had a good time. That was one of the first times I got to actually relax at one of these events. So thank you very much, Counsel Seaca. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I want to thank those folks from the Ward Six Association, all the volunteers that have, helped out at draft in Halloween. We had, you know, several hundred kids down there having a great time, so that's a great thing, it was a great day. A few other things, um, I don't know if people saw, the, the Northern Strand Trail, we had a ribbon cutting officially, so that was really a nice event over in Saugus, and the, all the communities had come together, so the trail's sort of officially opened from Everett to, to Lynn, and there's announcements of projects to actually connect it directly to the beach in Lynn, and a $50 million, uh, bridge project between Everett and Somerville that'll connect it really robust into Boston. I was at the Moving Together Conference today in Boston, and the Secretary of Transportation mentioned that, that something worked, so it's a really exciting development, and for, sort of in celebration of all the work on the trail, Bike to the Sea on November 10th, the day before Veterans Day, at Pearl Street Station is having its, its annual meeting, and it's sort of be a celebration about the trail, so I invite anybody to come down to Pearl Street that evening. And we, in honor of that, the president of Rails to Trails, the national organization that's been supportive, is coming to Malden to kind of honor the, the event, and that's Ryan Chow, so he'll be talking about their vision and what goes beyond. Our trail will connect into a whole network of trails throughout New England, so people will be able to go up to their places in Maine and New Hampshire via a trail.
Okay.
So just get your e-bikes, so, no. But that's some stuff coming up, so, and then I also just want to thank all our veterans for their service and honor at Veterans Day coming up, so have a, have a great Veterans Day coming up, bye.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counselor McDonald.
Want to remind folks, we are still taking public comment on our Malden Community Electricity draft plan. Just go to maldencommunityelectricity.com, there's a form right on the homepage, and you can fill it out. We'd love to hear your thoughts about our renewables targets and anything else related to the plan, that's through November 15th. So please share that link out. I want to remind us all that it is Election Day next week, and our polls are open from seven to?
Seven, eight.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Make sure that you do double-check your polling location, if you're one of those people who likes to vote on Election Day, because some of our precinct locations have changed. We're still doing early vote at City Hall through Thursday, that's, so tomorrow, Wednesday, November 2nd, and Thursday, November 3rd, you can vote early at City Hall from 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Any Malden resident can do that, and, but then early voting stops, so we can transition to our polling locations. If you have a vote-by-mail ballot, at this point, do not put it in the, in the postal service mail, like, don't put it in mailbox, bring it to City Hall and drop it in the dropbox out front so that it can be counted, and you can do that up through Election Day, through 8:00 PM on Election Day.
Yeah, and the box of the police station as well. If someone mails their ballot, as long as it's postmarked by November 8th, we can take it up until the 12th, the following Saturday.
So that is a recommendation that you drop it off, but not a legal requirement, yeah. At the, at the City Hall, that's at the City Hall dropbox or the one at the police station. Yeah, thank you, Clerk Lucy. So please get out and vote. I want to encourage everybody to pay attention to question four on the ballot, that was certified late, and so it is not in your red book. It is about considering whether to affirm or repeal the Working Families Mobility Act, which concerns drivers' license for all regardless of immigration status. So you do need to check that out and make sure you get your information on that, do a little more due diligence on that, on that one, because that's an important issue for Massachusetts. And I just wanted to congratulate the good people of Bainbridge Street and Ward 5 for another spectacular Halloween. This is, I, I don't know if you know about Bainbridge Street, I hope that you do. But it's gotta be, it's gotta be one of the best Halloween streets in the country. It's just incredible. The residents there go all out, thanks to MPD for closing the street this year, because there's so many kids just going down the block, and so I'm sure there are other great streets in all of your wards, but I'm telling you, Bainbridge did a great job. Thank you to the good people of Bainbridge Street.
Counselor O'Malley.
Unfortunately, bearer of bad news, daylight savings is coming to an end. This coming, what is it? I think it's on the? Saturday night. Horrible time of the year. I thought we canceled it, I thought we ended this. Is it next year? So it is coming to an end?
Maybe. Do you know who started daylight savings?
The farmers.
I'm being told by Counsel Simonelli that Benjamin Franklin started daylight savings. Same is the worst thing he's ever done. I, I do want to thank, I do want to thank Counselor McDonald for, for really highlighting the fact that Ward and precincts have changed. I'm gonna highlight Ward 4 specifically. So if you live east of Middlesex, Dartmouth, up to Mount Nav, if you live east of Middlesex, Dartmouth, up to Mount Nav, you are voting at the Early Learning Center, the old homeschool. If you live east of Crescent Street, you are also voting at the Early Learning Center or the Old Homeschool. If you live north of Orient and east of Main Street, you are voting at the Homeschool Early Learning Center. If you are not in those locations, you may still be voting at the Early Learning Center. If you're north of Mount Nav, no matter where you are, you're voting at the Early Learning Center, the Homeschool. And if you're in downtown Malden, west of Dartmouth, west of Middlesex, and south of Mount Nav, you're voting at the Senior Center at 7 Washington Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. And for those, for, for those people who, like me, always get confused as to, am I standing northeast, south, or west? Not quite sure where I am, especially when I'm with like, you know, someone on the streets and they're going, well, you know, the east side, and I'm like, okay, where's the east side? So to simplify it, you can go to the cityofmalden.org, there's a voting page, and it actually has a question, where do I vote? And all you have to do is put your address in, and it'll tell you where to go. So that might be a little easier for some people who have trouble with northwest, east, and south. So anyway, um, once again, just, I, I would like to thank everyone. Everyone who had a hand in the Ward 5 Halloween party. It was our 13th annual Halloween party that actually, I believe, was started by Counsel Lucy many, many years ago. It had a break for a while, and then. School committee. Adam Walden and myself brought it back to life. I think we called it Back from the Grave the first time that we did it. But anyway, we had an amazing turnout, and just a big thank you. I always say it takes the village to pull these things off, and it certainly does. It takes the community coming together to really, you know, have an event like we had. We were overwhelmed with people, and it was, it was actually wonderful that there were three other events running at the same time, because I can't even imagine, I don't think we would have, I think we would have busted at the seams if, if there hadn't been other events going on. So once again, thank you to the teams to set up, clean up, deliver in flowers, handing out pizza, I mean, everything that people did. So with that, I see one more light on Counsel Cologne Hayes, and we'll call it a night.
Yes, thank you. I also just wanted to say thank you, I was able to make it to a lot of the Halloween events, they were all fantastic. And to those who bought lots of candy in Malden and didn't have any, any trick-or-treaters, maybe you want to check in with one of the events. I, I was thinking that maybe that was the reason why we have so many fantastic events going on all throughout for trick-or-treating, that unfortunately, I don't know, maybe that's where people are going, and a lot of the homes aren't getting that. So I have heard about a lot of people who had lots of leftover candy, Girl Scouts take them, and we do ship them overseas, so to our, you know, people serving overseas, so if you want to check that out, if you have that leftover candy, that would be great. And also, just to say that I was able to attend the homes that were open from Habitat to Humanity on Pleasant Street, the opening, it was fantastic. I know a lot of us, I was one of them, who actually worked on it, we had some teams go out there, actually like swinging hammers and helping get that by, and to Counsel D. Maria, who was instrumental in bringing that to Malden. It was so fantastic to see those families moving into a first-time home. It was like, it was emotional to see, and it was, they brought the food out, and to be able to do that as a city was just fantastic.